We don't have anything on bike code tonight.
Uh, I think there's something we've got to make a decision about.
About administrative matters after this, so we're going to have it on administrative.
Administrative matters.
Yeah, I just have some couple of questions.
Good, how you doing? Thank you.
No, I'm sorry.
No, I just haven't been able to get my.
Excuse me, Dick coming behind?
Nope.
You're going to be there in a long while.
Thank you.
What if I did?
Did what?
Thank you very much.
Oh, yeah. Is this a motion passed out tonight or?
Minutes, yeah, she's got a show. She hasn't got copies, you can give me a.
Time is 6:30. I called meeting in order.
Who does mind sharing?
Mike Aherne Chairman, Rhonda Bishop Vice Chair, John Ringlett, Matt Wilson, Pat Roach, John Kelly, Dick Lewis Selectmen's Rep., Bob Dragon Altmann, Ray Gosden Selectmen's Representative are all present.
Oh, yes.
Item number three, public comments.
Here you can have.
Seeing them.
John, I'm going to do one.
Right. Administrative matters, we have April 19th minutes in front of us that we can go page by page. Any changes to page one? Page two? Page three? Page four? Page five? And page, nothing really on page six. No. Item number five, correspondence.
Oh, I just have.
Oh, yes, administrative matters, there is one more item.
Do we need to accept the minutes?
Oh, yes.
I make a motion to accept the minutes.
Okay, second. Okay, all those in favor of accepting the minutes?
Aye.
Signified by saying aye?
Aye, aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Now, second part of administrative matters.
Uh, in terms of your subcommittees, if you all just want to look at the minutes that you just approved, I guess it was a little bit vague whether or not the subcommittees would be starting on their subcommittee meetings, so if you need to have a long discussion, maybe we can do it after, but I just, if there was a consensus that everyone is, the subcommittees are meeting now before our work session at quarter of six, that everybody knows it, because it was a little, help your skeleton.
That's what we were.
So, it's up to you, so I don't, well, but it wasn't definitive, I guess, or there was, I got a lot of questions about it, so.
All right, well, we did not state that we were meeting each work session meeting. I don't believe anybody stated that, but I think it's a great.
Rhonda suggested it, and, but, but the minutes don't reflect any point definitive, so.
I think that's a great idea, the days that we have our work session meeting to be 45 minutes early.
Just at the work session?
Yeah. Does that, do you, anybody have any?
Up to you guys.
Anybody want to chime in on that?
So, the June work session will be meeting here at 5:45?
Sure.
Makes sense.
The first Thursday in the month is usually the work session. Sometimes we use our public hearing time if there's nothing, but that can be your backup.
Right, yeah.
So, if that's the way you want to leave it, then, do you want to make a motion just so it gets in the record and then?
Sure.
Then we'll know.
Would anybody like to make a motion on that matter? 45 minutes early, work session, do these.
I'm just, just wondering if.
We need a motion.
We're looking at six more, we'd be looking at six more meetings the rest of the year for the work session, is that going to be enough for us?
We could always need more, but at least it's got to start somewhere.
And we're shooting for next year, for the 2013.
2013, right.
But you do have a, you know, five to 10-year window, so you can always, which happened before, mump it along a little bit, I mean, you're definitely on track. Up to you guys.
So, we want to make a, you need a motion?
You think we need a motion for that?
Well, as long as every, is everyone here? Everyone's here, as long as everybody's here and it's up to you, I just, I just want everybody to recognize that that is the thing, and there won't be confusion.
So, I would say let's just.
Okay, whatever works.
Does that also include your public meeting?
I would say not just a work session meeting, unless you want to suggest it and we can talk about it. Why don't we start off for now? Each work session meeting will meet 45 minutes in advance, to meet in our subgroups for the master plan.
If you can.
The other thing too is, is there some way the planner can summarize as to what we are heading for, or what, maybe make an agenda of what we're doing, because tonight it was like a rubber ball, you know, and I'm afraid it's going to happen that way in a lot of your committees, it just keeps bouncing around and you're not ever going to come to a finalization.
We did talk about getting together a timeline, maybe you and I can meet.
We can do that.
Why don't we meet before the next work session meeting, to set up a timeline of where we want to have this master plan finalized, and then work our way back to what we'll have to do.
I'll make a general task chart, as we've said a couple of times before, what everyone is tasked with right now, individually or in your subcommittee meetings that just started, is going through the implementation plan, which is within volume one of the master plan, and going through individually or together and seeing what you think is obsolete, this and, because that gives you a starting point.
Right.
See what's out there that we have to update. So, that's, that's, that's the whole work for now, I thought that was clear.
And I, probably you and I can meet in your office at some point, talk about Mr. Kelly's.
I can make you, I can make you.
Do we have a memo on that, so it, we know before, before the next time that you meet?
Sure, yeah.
That'd be a good idea.
Yeah, I know, it's a little confusing.
At least I don't know what I'm doing, you know, I don't know what timeline of our actual information line that I've got to follow and to a conclusion.
Great.
Sure. Okay, I'm sorry, and in that vein, does everyone have, this is volume one, the green cover, or something that looks like this, maybe in color, does everyone have this? So, John, you do not?
No.
Okay.
I have it here, Sharon.
You do not?
No.
Okay. Pat, you say?
I have just the implementation plans, starting page one.
No, that's okay.
Just let me know, I can stop and pick it up.
Yep, I'm not going to fax it, so.
No.
Paul has.
Just give it to my pariah, Sharon.
I think we'll.
Okay.
Just one question, I mean, there's volume two.
Right, right.
Could that be put on the website?
Sure.
Or, I mean, I don't know how big, I mean.
I can get it, the library has it now, because they can't find their copy, it's about yay big, with all kinds of different stuff, so we can try, we can, maybe, it will come to subcommittee meetings?
Yeah, I think maybe at the minimum if we have it.
I just, it's, yeah, to look at, there are, as you know, there are three volumes, and the table of contents is listed in the front here, and it's kind of difficult to read, because it should all be bold-faced by volume, and it's not.
Mr. Kelly.
In that volume two, does volume two pertain to New Hampshire, or to small towns, or does volume two include Concord, Manchester, Nashua, which we really don't care about at all? I would appreciate could take excerpts out of it, or whatever, that pertains to a town like New Hampshire. Is that what I'm saying?
Volume two, yep, I, it, volume two is the Plymouth data book, I'm sure there are references, maybe, or correlations for comparative.
Over what time period?
Well, I don't, I don't have it in front of me, John, I don't know, I mean, it's.
I guess what I'm saying is, when I first had, in the tax business, I bought a $1,500 library and told about drilling for oil and fisheries and everything else, and I finally got down to one volume, and that's, because that's what pertains to my practice, and if that is something that is back in the 1800s or something like.
No, I don't think so.
I just don't know why it would be so thick for.
Well, because it's disparate, it's, from what I've seen, it's disparate pieces, volume, pieces of paper, it's, it's a lot of backup paperwork, this piece and that piece, you know, some of it, it's just in a loose leaf binder.
What is the backup, what, what do you mean by that?
Data, that, like studies, like housing studies, that has been, have been used to come to the conclusions that were put in here and in that, it's, it's backup data to a great extent, but it's.
Can we go for a time, time element?
I think when they, when they do an update, a study, I think that it's our job to make, if there is an updated study, to have that replace the old one.
Exactly.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm trying to say.
Exactly.
So, it won't be the same.
No, 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 I'll bring it in, I'll bring it in as soon as I get it back from Kathy.
Okay, item number five, could I, I hate the, I don't want to belabor the point, the volume three, is that a similar type of a thing, loose leaf type of a thing?
No, it's in the archives, yeah, original, that's even more pieces of paper, that's the sticky note dot stuff, and, I mean, not literally, but there's a lot of that. And just one more thing, who does not have a new land use book? I have extras, so I'm not understanding why, everybody's got one?
I've got one of those.
Okay.
I didn't take one from here, I have one.
No, I know you did.
I've got one that's full of potatoes.
You didn't have one?
Well, I do.
Oh.
Mr. Gosden.
Just to offer a couple of comments, the way to think of volume three, that's the work papers that kind of serve as an historical reference of what the thinking was of those people who were engaged in developing the master plan at that time, so if people wanted to understand from a historical perspective, five or six years later, what was the thoughts that were in front of the group of putting the plan together at that time, and volume two was all of the references, materials that were used for which data was extracted from, so that if you had a point that was raised in the master plan, and you wanted to question where that came from, you had the reference material already at hand, and the idea was not to edit any of that, so that if somebody wanted to study it, they didn't have to worry about who was doing the editing.
Item number five, correspondence.
No.
Okay, assignments and reports, Board of Selectmen, Mr. Lewis?
We didn't, we meet last, it seems like it's been a while since the selectman.
It's been a couple of weeks.
It's the 23rd, I think.
Just the grant application is the only thing I can think of that we worked on, and Sharon, you might want to, you're quite, quite qualified to speak about their grant application.
Oh, and the CB.
Oh, CDBG?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, well, the board reviewed some information and held a public hearing on a feasibility study grant for the Whippa Will Cooperative Mobile Home Park, to look into their infrastructure needs, I guess they've got failing infrastructure.
Water and.
Yeah, this is a $12,000 CDBG grant, so they went through the public hearing on the 23rd, and one of the upshots of that was looking at the CDBG required housing community development plan, which we realized was previously out of date, so we're fixing that, Ray and I met earlier this week.
Conservation Commission, Mr. Wilson?
Nothing to report.
zoning board of adjustment, Sharon?
They met Tuesday, and had two applications for billboards, which were denied.
Water and Sewer District, Ms. Bishop?
Nothing.
Penitentiary House, Local River Advisory Committee, Mr. Kelly?
Since my wife was coming in from Iowa, and I had to pick her up at the airport, I sort of missed that meeting.
Okay. The Emergency Management Committee, Mr. Roach?
Nothing to report.
Town Planner, report?
By way of our guest tonight, I have been in contact with Mr. Steve Tasker, who's the Vice President for Finance Administration at PSU, and he's brought some of his colleagues with him. I think folks may have been noticing on Highland Street, the old Methodist Church is starting to undergo some interior changes, and Mr. Tasker is here tonight to speak to the board. As you know, the process, as far as site plan oversight, is a little different with certain entities, the university system being one, and this is kind of an introductory meeting, and we can certainly, at some point, if you're willing, have a presentation at our public hearing meeting, so the public who isn't watching tonight can be invited to see what's going on. The statute allows for the planning board to provide some written commentary, much like you did with the library process, if you remember that, it wasn't a site plan approval per se, but, you know, any commentary is welcome, but this, tonight, is just kind of an introduction to the board, so they can see what's happening, and to kind of strengthen our, our good relationship with the university, so the left hand knows what the right hand's doing, the university is also doing their master plan update this year, so I think it's a good time for us to be talking to each other and sharing some information, so.
Great.
About it.
Mr. Tasker?
Sure.
Whatever's comfortable.
Thank you for allowing us to be here tonight, we have a short four-hour presentation. It should be done by midnight, I think. No, we have a short, it's really about 15 minutes or so, but if there were questions, it would take a bit longer, but thank you for allowing us to be here tonight, we're really happy to be able to talk about this project, it's one that we think is good for the university, for the community, and for the general area in terms of adding, adding some value to the cultural heritage of the North Country of Plymouth. Let me just introduce who else is here, and kind of what we, what we think will work best in terms of the presentation, and then we'll get right, we'll get right into it. Sitting in front of me with the Devon Air with the young man with the beard and glasses is John Scott, he's the civil engineer from RFS Engineers, and has worked on the civil engineering aspect of the project. Right behind him is Dr. Catherine Amadon, who is the faculty member and also the director of the Museum of the White Mountains, which is our official name of the project, and to her left is Ellen Shippey, who is the Director of Physical Plant at Plymouth State University, so in some way or another, all of these folks have a pretty, pretty important role in what you're about to, to learn about the project tonight. So, I thought in terms of process, what we would do is that we would ask Dr. Amadon to give us an overview, about a five-minute overview of what we're doing, why we're doing it relative to the programmatic benefits, the community benefits, and just what, what is this particular museum all about, and I think that will help you understand what we're doing with it. And then I'll sort of talk about the general overview of the layout, the viewpoint, and kind of how the pieces fit together inside the museum, that's where most of the work is occurring, of course, and then John Scott will wrap up with a, kind of a fairly detailed site, kind of overview of, of the site, and we've got some handouts that we'll, we'll give out too, so we're happy to answer questions either during or at the end, whichever, whichever you prefer, so I'll ask Catherine Amadon to come up and say a few words.
Thank you very much, and thank you very much for inviting us this evening. The museum is going to bring together and house collections of objects and images related to the White Mountains. We had a donation, a founding collection from Dan Noel of Enigma, New Hampshire, of about 6,000 objects and images, stereoscopics, hotel ledgers, postcards, an incredible array of materials that we're currently cataloging, we have about 3,000 of them online, so in some ways, the museum is already open, although the renovations are still ongoing. We've had subsequent donations since, 5,000 rare books from the White Mountains, paintings, other types of objects and images, these will be in the museum, available for researchers, viewers, classes, people coming in, we will be doing exhibitions, one or two a year in the beginning, and hopefully becoming more robust over time. Everything that we do in the museum is also going to be on the internet, if you Google Museum of the White Mountains now, you will go straight to our website and see five exhibitions that PSU has done about the White Mountains, and you're going to sense where we're going. Everything we're doing, everything, is going to be free, open to the public, and accessible. So, currently, you can see these five exhibitions, full content, full free downloadable catalogs, standards-based education materials, everything from these first five projects that happened prior to even moving ahead with the museum, it's all there. We see ourselves as a great service provider in terms of education and materials, and when I go out and talk about the museum, which I love to do, and actually can't get enough of sometimes, one thing we're consistently here is, why is it taking so long to get the museum going? And it has taken long, we've been through previous attempts to create a museum of the White Mountains in different communities throughout the area, this is over the last 25 years, and we have decided that we are going to do it, because that is something that is a great need and a great interest for people who live here, and for people who come in, visit, recreate, and are interested in the area. So, I have the exciting part of it, I think, in terms of thinking, in terms of programming, serving public need, and getting people involved in the project. So, I think at this point, that's pretty much where, where we're at in terms of where we're going with the museum, the first exhibition opens in February of 2012, and that will be up for about a year, and the, that is about the White Mountains in the 19th century, the exhibition after that is going to look at land use and geology in the 20th century, so we're going to be having a series of thematic exhibitions that will hopefully engage a maximum number of people in the museum. Do you have any questions?
I just, I have a comment, I, I was lucky enough to get out of the office, I forget if it was a year or so ago, when you had the exhibition at, at the gallery, and the period paintings, and the Guy Shory photographs, were just mind-blowing, absolutely exquisite, very, very evocative, and this, I think this is incredibly wonderful project, because this is who we are and who we were, so it's great to have it here, you know, in place.
Yes, actually, there's, in terms of, and this is sidetracking just a little bit, there's a glorious exhibition of White Mountain art over at Holiness Academy right now, that we collaborated with them on, so if you want to get another touch of what's coming in your direction, you can just cross the river and go to Holiness.
And when does this museum plan on opening?
February 2012, 2013.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Did I say 12?
Yeah, you did, that's okay. I thought you meant the online, start in February.
Will the main thrust of this information be for these White Mountains, or is it going to be for the Plymouth area up in, including?
It's going to, it is the Museum of the White Mountains, the White Mountains spill over into Maine a little bit, they don't make it to Vermont, but we are going to be comprehensively looking at the whole region, and in doing so, it offers us wonderful partnership opportunities, the Guy Shory show is with the Washington Observatory, we're working closely with the Jackson Historical Society, Lisa Landari of the Plymouth Historical Society and I meet and talk quite often, and will be collaborating on different projects, nobody can have everything about the White Mountains, the thing is, how do we all best collaborate with our different collections of different areas?
And what, what Frank Corney or Mount Lees, I don't even know, probably the Plymouth's good case, they'd be far enough down from Flint, no?
Because we're the gateway to the White Mountains.
They're not camping, are they?
No.
They think they are. Absolutely not.
I think it's camped and we want it in Plymouth, no?
Was there also a tie-in academically?
Yes, we are going.
Later on.
Actually, currently, I have six students interning from a variety of departments, kind of the growing field museums, in museum area right now, in libraries as well, is scanning and tagging, that what you're talking about earlier about having the handbook online, it's as useful as the tagging system that goes with it, so part of what we're doing is we're training students to appropriately scan and tag, to make information about the area more readily accessible, we're also having business interns come in, we're going to be working with business membership, and there'll be more partnerships throughout the community, then we will be integrating it into courses, needless to say, we love field trips, but given that those days have kind of come to an end for economic reasons, we are putting everything online for free and downloading it, because that's kind of the new field trip.
Good.
All right.
Thank you.
Do you have little brochures if anybody would like?
Yeah.
I found out also, I'm going to be passing around to folks, so.
I know where that picture is.
I'm going to be talking a little bit about the, the facility itself, and we'll save a lot of the site plan issues for John, because he's, he's got a, he doesn't have the knowledge of the mountain areas. This is the view of the building as it exists, now, of course, it was church up until about five or six, seven years ago, it was in quite bad shape on the inside when we first started opening things up, so most of the work we're doing is on the inside. We are closing off the areas where there were windows, we're continuing to start for shaded areas, in a museum setting, you want to be able to control the light and the intensity with regard to what you're displaying in the gallery, so we're going to be closing up those, those areas. In the front, not much else will be changing per se, I mean, the physical structure, at least on the front side, will, will remain fairly, fairly unchanged, certainly there'll be landscaping along the front, we're also constructing what's called an interpretive path, which is a zigzag path leading up to the main, the main entrance here, Catherine has been working with the Appalachian Mountain Club and other organizations to actually construct a, a hard surface path, not asphalt and not concrete, but something that's hard enough that can meet ADA requirements, but have the right grade leading up to the entrance of the building, and supplemented with plantings and, and other kinds of local, local flowers and shrubs. So, not much will change here, fairly, fairly typical for what you see today, looking from the side of the building, a little bit to the left side, again, not much is changing on, on this side of the building, we are on the back corner, and the, the floor plan will show it a bit more clearly, but we are adding an elevator and a loading dock, we anticipate when we have exhibitions coming to the campus, we're going to need a place for the trucks to kind of back in, and back in right up to the building, we also need to have an elevator to be able to transport things, obviously, up and down between the floors, so there will be a small kind of expansion on, on the back end. The museum is being designed as a two-phased project, and we're only doing phase one now, the ultimate plan is to construct a, a high-quality museum environment, and that requires a little bit more square footage than we have now, and it also requires a really sophisticated level of heating and cooling equipment that can meet stringent museum standards, so phase one has been designed to get the basic infrastructure and all the basic elements in place for the building and for the, the building systems, and then once we get to the second phase, which is yet to be determined when that would happen, we would then just be adding on to that as we, as we went along. So, let me run through what, what you're looking at now with regard to our project. The first floor, and this is the, this is Highland, Highland Street up at the top, you can see how the trail that we're talking about kind of winds its way around, it needs to do that to create the right grade as the ADA enters to the building, and so that's under, under, underway now. Obviously, we'll be allowing the image of the building, the two spaces here initially will be office spaces for Catherine and other folks that will be helping to, to manage the museum, the main gallery area, of course, will be the main church area, a large, open, much like this room, it's with open rafters and high, high cathedral-type ceilings, and then working down the back is kind of support, support space to support the processing of artifacts and the transport of materials coming to the museum. You can see as you enter in through the side, which is the only entrance to the facility, where the, the new loading dock here is jutting out a bit, so that if the truck is coming in and back right in, unload their, their goods, and then just, just exit out. On the basement level, or the garden level as we call it, there is some, quite a bit of unfinished space, we're purposely not finishing it out until we get to the second phase two, for cost reasons and just, and just because we don't need it at the beginning. Our storage area of all the collections that Catherine was talking about is in the lower level here, and that, we think, will be adequate for the short term, but the way Catherine is receiving and processing goods, I think that room will be filled up fairly quickly. Restrooms are on the, on the basement level, packing areas and hallways and access to the elevator, so it's obviously just a duplicate of what we want for the floor plan. When we get to the master plan, which again, we are not, this is the ultimate goal, and we're not sure. we're not sure that will happen, the main difference here is that we see a squaring off of the building on the back side. We'd actually, if you recall, through the back plan, this piece doesn't exist. So we would add this piece, square off the building, and then we would reshuffle a lot of the locations of people and things in the building. And essentially, the bottom line is what we'd end up doing is creating more academic space. You can probably see over here on this side, a large auditorium-like area, that's where the current collection area would go. We would convert that to a large lecture hall, we would add a conference room, we'd have classroom space, math and practice room space, and some flex space for seminars, workspace for students. And the staff would actually be relocated to the basement with all of their particular needs and resources. On the top side, what would happen is we would convert these two spaces here, which are currently allocated for offices, into smaller galleries. So those are the special galleries designed to house special exhibits. Gallery space here doesn't change, and the new addition, basically, on the top area becomes a really high-quality collection storage area, one that would be temperature-controlled, humidity-controlled, and really designed to meet all the standards that we believe we would have to go through to be certified as a high-quality museum. And, of course, the back end over here with the elevator and loading dock really doesn't show you very much. We're not sure when this is going to happen. We're hopeful we can do it at some point soon. The second phase, we're calling the master plan phase, will be totally dependent on fundraising. So we have to raise the money to do that, and we're not in a position to do that today. But if we can get the infrastructure set up and all the basic systems there, we'll have a working, pretty good-quality museum that we can actually use and we think leverage to accomplish this plan, which is really our ultimate goal. So at that point--
Could I just ask, on the second phase in the storage area on the first floor, main floor, is that storage, I mean, sort of boxed up or storage so that a researcher could go in and look through shelves or something?
Yeah, in both cases, where the collection's in storage, it's going to be in boxes in archivary storage. However, if you want to have something pulled for giving as an academic institution, if you want museums to call up and say, oh, we see something, so let's say no, it's a way of storage. But part of our mission is, if you call up and say, sure, we'll pull it, what time do you want to come on Wednesday and Friday?
Okay, great, thank you.
The last comment I would make is, we have a meeting with Paula Brothers, which lives with the church and Hickel Lake Properties, who's on the west side of, I guess it'd be right over here. So the church is down here and the Hickel Lake Properties folks are on this side. So we've been meeting with them. They know what's going on. We've discussed where the boundary lines are. We are putting a small concrete wall with a fence to kind of separate the properties. Students, I guess, have issues driving over curbs and whatnot, so we're trying to build up a little bit of a reinforcement there to replicate what's there now. If you recall, you may not know, there are steel posts still with concrete living in the property line. And so we need to do something there to make sure that the students aren't staying where they need to stay. So we've had meetings with them, and they understand where we are and feel we're okay about this at this point, so. Okay, we'll stop there and let John take over and go over the site plan.
Thanks, Steve. I have a couple of handouts. One is just a brief one-page project fact sheet, if you'll give this around. Ellen has copies of the site plan, and if you're interested, I do have copies of the architectural building elevation. In fact, maybe I ought to--
Is this that you're passing out now the same that's displayed on the easel? That's good. I was going to ask you to move the easel closer, but this is--
Yeah.
Thank you.
Site is very small. It's slightly less than half an acre. It presents some interesting challenges from a civil engineering standpoint. We have 136 feet of frontage on Highland Street. Steve mentioned the brothers on the left is an apartment building in the left rear. There is a commercial laundromat, and St. Matthew's Catholic Church is to the rear. University property is to the east, which is the downhill from the building and across Highland Street to Pembroke Gossit Hall. It does represent a contiguous addition to the campus property. It's not a standalone thing. That did help us to alleviate some of the difficulties of dealing with such a small site. We were able to squeeze thirteen parking spaces onto the, in the rear and on the left The main entrance to the building is the same as the church entrance, although there was the architectural raising of the floor elevation from the foyer of the church to the main floor of the building, which will necessitate new granite steps in the front and the curvilinear walkway that Steve mentioned, hope to evoke as a mountain trail. The one building addition is part of phase one, as Steve mentioned, the elevator and loading dock in the left rear required to, so that they can take deliveries of exhibitions and materials. These will be fairly infrequent. There is adequate geometry to back a truck in off Highland Street without too much difficulty. We will have to vacate the parking spaces on the left side to do that maneuver, but since it's fairly infrequent, I don't think that will be a problem. In order to create the loading dock and make it so that the truck is level while it's offloading, the grades had to be raised slightly on the left side and towards the rear, which necessitated the retaining walls on the left side and in the rear. They're not very high, and they're plain concrete. The highest point of the wall is just shy of five feet, and it's in the far left corner. So the wall isn't only to keep out the student parkers, but to hold the ground from spilling over onto the neighbors. The access is by the pre-existing curb cut, the same curb cut that the church used. Utilities are primarily the, there is one update to the fact sheet, is power will not come in off the street from public service, but rather will be connected to the campus grid by underground dock banks, which is a little less obtrusive, a little more expensive. Also, telecommunications and data will be provided by underground banks. There will be a chiller on the right, pad-mounted chiller near the right front corner, which will provide air conditioning for the building, and a transformer behind it. Those will be the only visible utilities that will be on the site. A buried propane tank will be in front lawn, but the little filling dome will be hidden by some landscaped. The museum, being a museum, the interior atmosphere is very sensitive to, for preservation of documents and artwork and so forth. So moisture control is paramount, and the existing building did have a minor problem with moisture in the basement, so to alleviate that, we're ringing the building with foundation drains, which unfortunately weren't part of the original construction. And those will tie into some, a minor addition of storm drains, one catch basin in the back, and it will connect to your, the town catch basin on Highland Street just opposite Bagley Hall. Water and sewer connections are pretty straightforward to the municipal mains in the street. I think that's it for utilities. The project team, if you're interested, is Barbe Wheelock Architects is the lead consultant. Our firm, Bruce Ross Shumway, did the engineering. Turekis, surveying consultants, provided a boundary and topographic survey. And Ballin Corporation of Meredith is our general contractor. As Catherine mentioned, project completion is planned for next February. Any questions?
Go ahead. Yeah, in the second phase, which I know may be a few years out, you square the building off, so you lose those parking spots in the back end?
We lose about six spots.
Six, so you'd be down to seven spots.
Yeah, again, it is, it is a small site. We squeeze as much as we can onto it, can't create space where it isn't. But to alleviate that, it is contiguous with the campus.
Right.
Many of the visitors will be associated with the campus.
Right.
There are parking areas around the corner on Lang, there's two of them around the corner on Langdon Street, there's a big one behind Pembroke Gossit Hall.
Right.
Hopefully--
The second part of that question, I assume typically parking would be staff and visitors, not students who are parking their cars there anyway.
No, I don't believe, you'd probably allow that.
Yeah, right, that's, yeah.
Unfortunately, they can control that part.
Right, yeah. Thank you.
It seems to me that you'll have quite a bit of parking that you will have to find. Do you plan to utilize the St. Matthew's parking area at all? I don't see that there's going to be enough for the number of things that you're going to have here in this building.
Well, again, the--
Different classes and things of this nature.
Right. That the fact that it is fairly compact campus, and there are other parking spots, or parking lots owned by the university, not unreasonable walking distance away, and there are metered spaces on Highland Street in front of the building. Yes, for some of the exhibitions, there might be harder to find a parking space than normal, but we're not anticipating that it will be the same traffic issues or parking issues you'd get with a sports building or a larger building like that. It is, it is a small building, so.
Could I follow up? Sorry. I see the building is 8,800 square feet. What you plan on phase two, will that be expanded significantly, or will that be going up or out? Or is there room there on the lot to--
It will be contained within the footprint of the--
It will be.
--top property lines. We don't have to acquire any more property. And it will be attached to the building. It will not change the roof line from the street. It will, the upper floor will match the upper floor of the existing building. So the new addition will be fairly unobtrusive from the street, but it will, as Mr. Roach noted, take some parking spaces away from it.
Thank you. Mr. Kelly?
I'm quite familiar, but just that one. Traffic congestion really bothers me because I know I have to go through that area every time I go down the street, and sometimes it takes me twenty minutes to travel a mile. And it's just going to aggravate the whole situation if you have guys packing up behind the library and in Boyd Hall. The students, as you probably realize, wander back and forth across the road and the lanes to what the traffic might seem to do. And it's just going to aggravate the whole situation. But if you have your workers packing the parking lot, or if they go across the street and pack in Boyd Hall and library, you're just going to have more traffic moving back and forth across that street, and it's just going to aggravate the vehicle traffic on that street. The second question is, most of, and this is more to the planning board than it is to the university, most of the time with commercial businesses such as the Chinese Western, on Tenny Mountain Highway, we went through a gamut of various meetings before they even bought the place or even bought the land, trying to figure out how the traffic was going to flow, how the packing was, what the impact was as far as the building was and everything like that. Did we go through any of that before these--
We don't have to, in this instance. The statute, which they happen to give you a copy of, these folks come under the auspices of a governmental use, which would apply to the town doing its own thing, like the library. I realize that's the N.A.'s Library Association. What folks need to do in this type of situation under the governmental land use is in the statute, which is 674:54. They're supposed to give the town notice, which they're doing.
After they bought, please.
That's their prerogative, John. That really is their prerogative to do what they want. You know, if it's a fool's errand, then it's a fool's errand, but I don't think that's the case right now. You know, this is, this is an incidence where we're trying to open some lines of communication here, and this is kind of, if you will, the conceptual, I mean, it's a little far ahead, but it's because they're governmental organization for forty folks. And then, you know, it says, "may conduct a public hearing," the statute, relative to the use, you know. And I think perhaps if these folks are willing to come back, then maybe we could have an open public hearing to get public input. But because they are under the umbrella of a governmental use, the planning board can certainly give commentary, as we are tonight, and, you know, either through the minutes or through a formal report or whatever they'd like to do, issue non-binding written comments relative to the conformity of non-conformity of the proposal. The proposal, zoning-wise, meets the conformity. I mean, yes, there will be some parking impacts, but there are parking impacts everywhere in this town. And to digress a little bit, because I was going to speak to parking impacts anyway, the museum will have some association with the university's Welcome Center. So when there are, if I understand this correctly, if, when there are planned events and showings, evening showings, you've got the lessening of the evening traffic. You also have options for shuttle from the Welcome Center. And as the gentleman said, you've got different types of parking in that vicinity. I mean, I know it's congested there. It's congested after every class, you know, on the two crosswalks, and it is what it is for a university town, so.
I know that for safety's sake, whenever I come up through there, and I've heard this complaint from a lot of people, when they come up over Highland Street and there's students, especially in dark clothing at night, there's not sufficient lighting or illumination to see students. And especially when you're going up that hill, you can miss a student so fast, it's unbelievable. And they have absolutely no concern as to traffic at all. They just walk out and walk across the street.
Well, that's why--
And somewhere along the way, safety's sake, it's going to be a real factor as far as this is concerned, if I really do. The other thing, since you blew my whole story out of the water, the one, last question, since they can do whatever they want, is the turning space in the loading area, I wouldn't, how big a truck is it going to be able to back into that?
A commercial tractor-trailer can make the maneuver. Most of the deliveries will be by vehicles more like a FedEx or UPS truck, but also rigid-body, larger trucks, and it will accommodate a semi-trailer.
I was just wondering, because, again, to go back to the Chinese place and up on Tenny Mountain Highway, the people that have been on this board for a while can remember that they had months of trying to figure out how big a parking place it was going to take to turn a semi-trailer around or-- to turn a semi-trailer around or boss around or whatever large vehicle was around. And it certainly was the tremendously biggest space in what you've got there. I'm for it. I just have these questions that I hope you resolve now, because it's a lot easier to move the planes around with a pencil than it is to move the bricks around with a knife and put the bricks and paper down.
With all due respect, we do have expertise in that area, and as well as computer software that generates all the turns and-- or vehicles. And we can do it. Perfectly confident.
And sorry, and also about how frequently would it happen? I mean, I'd love to think that we're in a situation, the Chinese restaurant, with a tractor trailer coming once or twice a week. But I think we're looking at something like that happening once or twice a year, you know. But I do like the idea of we put deliveries by tractor trailers.
More questions? Ms. Bishop?
Yeah, I just wanted to find out if there's going to be much lighting change. I think that there is a street light actually, like in between where you said, were you going to put that little berm to divide the properties? I think there's a street light there. But I didn't know-- I don't know what the hours of operation is. If the lighting area is going to be changed.
I do not believe there is additional sight lighting proposed. Then what is there now? Come off the street?
It will be open primarily daytime hours. Will be open probably one evening a week to facilitate. But it's a daytime facility. Steph, from Phase One.
Thank you. Mr. Roach?
Yeah, one more question. On the rear of the property, I think there used to be steps from that parking lot down to St. Matthews Church parking lot. Those steps can be there or gone. They're gone, okay.
We talked in church as well about that. You know, I don't know if you were on the steps recently, but they were rickety.
Yeah, they were not in good shape.
They weren't in good shape. And I think they could have. They would have preferred us to keep them there, but they were just in bad shape, so.
Right, right. Okay, not a big deal.
Mr. Gosman?
First off, I'm pleased to have you here this evening. Also pleased, in general, to see the proposals that you've submitted in terms of the specifics. There have been a number of us in town that have been aware of this development for over a year, so this is not a news item. It's nice that we finally had an opportunity to engage on some of the details associated with how we bring this project forward. I'd like to pick up on Rondo's question on lighting. I think it's important to be consistent with the efforts that the town is putting forward, and also within the campus itself, to make sure that the project, when it is completed, actually looks at the existing lighting and converts anything that's on the outside to Dark Skies compliance. I think it's consistent with all the new construction that's taking place that the planning board is approving, so that all facilities are Dark Skies compliant. I heard you mention there may not be any attention or need for anything, but I think it's appropriate to create a need, to make sure you look at the existing lighting and if it needs conversion, to be Dark Skies compliant that occurs. I also think, to pick up on what the chairman spoke to earlier, that as the university undertakes its master plan review, that there be a comprehensive interaction between the work that this group is going to do on their master plan and the university's. I think that there needs to be a clear understanding of how we address the parking situation as best we can. Certainly, our planner pointed out that we've got a lot of constraints that we have to deal with, but there needs to be coordinated effort. I know that within the campus community, there'll be a concerted effort to make sure that we take advantage of what can be brought into play with the various parking lots. But I haven't heard anything being spoken to about what happens to that recreational visitor who comes to town, who doesn't know about the situations that we have to deal with. And to think that they're going to try to find a place on Highland Street, put a quarter in that meter, I'm not sure that that's something that's been really thought out very well. I don't think you're making it easy for visitors to come in and take advantage of a great facility. I think the location is outstanding. You think about it, it's right close at hand to the town's library. It's close at hand to the university's library. So there's a lot of synergy there with that location being used. But the one key question that I see is, there just needs to be more dialogue on what we're going to do with parking and maybe taking advantage of adjacent parking lots. You know, when this was a church, your concern was, we're happy on Sunday for the most part. But you're going to have, you will, a five to six day, a week utilization. So maybe there's things that can be done with some of the other neighbors just through the discussions.
I would like to just add that part of the reason we're also here is to listen to your feedback and suggestions and concerns. And so we'll take them very seriously. And if you'd like to have another meeting, you can talk through that and have a circle or I can make you share, whatever's the most effective.
I think it would be great, just to admit, you've got a little food for thought, you know, there's also signage. But this is, you know, this is somewhat, at least for our purposes, a conceptual meeting. And then to have it, you know, open to the public, I think would be a great dialogue. So, you know, let us-- let me know when you're ready, when you'd like to, and we'll set it up.
Well, I'll confirm what the sight lighting situation is. If you was that. Sorry, I didn't have it off. Took my time. We'll do that for you.
I think that's it.
That's it.
Is there anybody else that was going to talk?
No, unless--
Oh, okay. So it looks like our concerns are from many of the board members, the lighting, the parking. And was there one other thing?
Signage. We just-- information, just more information on everything.
Great. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Very exciting.
Thank you, guys, for coming.
We still have three and a half hours, you know, if you want.
Well, we're still awake.
So I'm going to encourage them. All right. That brings us to item number eight. Unfinished, another business. Sharon, do you want to bring us up to date on this?
Uh, yes. One more time, we'll reiterate it, and that's perfectly all right.
Friend blocking.
This is the third of May on Saturday. Mountain View Farms slash the Blackie Brothers' original site plan approval for Lot 44, the condominium lot officially expires. It had a long run. It had a seven-year conditional approval. In that interim, I'm just kind of recapturing this. In that interim, their alteration of terrain permit, which is extremely important, expired. A sidebar to that is their alteration of terrain permit was based on a lot less stringent standards than is, you know, they have to jump through or achieve now. And there was nothing done. There is no active and substantial development of any kind, I would say, other than test pits. I mean, any on-the-ground shovel work done. Our town attorney, our town council, John Radigan, has said, not once but twice, that this approval is not vested. So the way I see it, the charge you folks have tonight is one of two things. Mr. Blackie, as we mentioned, our last meeting on the 19th, had come forward through a letter that he conveyed to me to ask for a 30 to 60-day extension of this approval that's going to expire in two days. So there is that option to provide that, to give us more time to talk about stuff. With that outcome possibly being, giving him another extension on his approval to whenever. It's normally a year, whatever. The second option that you have as a board, because we've gone through this and you do have a lot of background information on it, is to make the determination tonight that on Saturday, May 5th, this initial approval, which has been unique and lasted for seven years, is in fact over. And for them to continue to develop this condominium project, they would have to come back to you folks and submit another plan for site plan approval.
Mr. Wilson?
Simple question for clarification. Lot 44, you referred to as the condominium lot, is essentially the pull side, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
I have a point of clarification, too. Has the alteration terrain permit expired or will expire?
Oh, it's gone. It's over.
It's already expired.
I've got the information somewhere in a file, but it was at least a year or so. It's gone over dead.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Kelly?
Just to go forward and pose a question. When you talk about the condominium, that is just the 32-unit condominium? It has nothing to do with the cluster houses and everything up, further up the hill?
That's-- no, that's the whole shooting match, is 39 units. I can pull up.
How many units in a condo, in the large condo building?
Some are four, some are six. Those are the maximums.
About compalet.
Thirty-nine condominiums.
Thirty-nine total.
That includes the cluster houses up above. How much is the-- is there a large building that would contain condos? The way I understand it, there was a big building that housed 32 condominium units, and then there were cluster houses further up the hill.
That's not the way I understand it. I thought the largest was would be like six in a building.
I'm sorry?
The largest was like six condos in one building, if there was multiple buildings.
Yeah, there's different configurations. They're not all the same.
But it's not like one huge building with like 30 units.
No, 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 no. No. It's clustered development of different numbers of units.
Any other comments?
When they're talking about the condo units, they're talking about all of it instead of this small one that has six units to it.
So we have a couple of ways we can go on this. We can allow Mr. Blackie to come back at some point, or we can-- it looks like we would have to make a vote to let--
Tonight, you have to make a decision on something, right? Either or.
Either we give him some opportunity to come back, or we let the original approval expire in two days.
I don't see why that should.
Mr. Dragon, you have?
Well, I would like to, you know, there's a lot here that probably I'm not aware of, but I do know that anyone who's spent the time and money and so forth, we as board members, if we can work with these people, and the economy's a factor, and time is what we're talking about here. I don't see where we gain anything by shutting things down. I think we should give them a reasonable opportunity to meet any criteria that we have as far as coming up with a finalized plan on the development. I just don't like to see pulling the work out for any contract. That's my view.
Mr. Kelly?
With the new rules and regulations, would that have any effect in regards to, if we give him an extension, the new rules and regulations would not come into effect until after that extension? I guess what I'm asking is, that the new rules and regulations are either state or federal?
The state. If you give-- we're not talking about expanding the time to make this decision. Let's say theoretically, you say, okay, at some point soon, before the 5th, you're going to give him a year's extension on his approval. He's already had seven years. You're going to give him one more year. Within that year, he would have to obtain a state DES alteration of terrain permit because of the level of disturbance that he's created up there. And that would probably beget some new drainage and grading and everything else, because what they had to aspire to for thresholds before was a heck of a lot lower than what you've got now, A. And B, you've got Plymouth, you've got other development around that wasn't there when they got their first permit. So the circumstances have changed.
And who would be responsible for either allowing or disallowing his advancement to of the project? Would it be the state? In other words, is it going to come back to our planning board so that we can say yes or no, yea or nay?
We're going to set the conditions that were in the original notice of decision, right, Dick's got it right there, I believe, would all have to be met within that year's time, and he would have to get approval from DES, because he had approval before, but that's expired. So he's got to do it again with a different set of circumstances. So it's a one-two punch. If he doesn't meet our criteria, we can't give him our blessing. And if he doesn't meet DES's new criteria, we can't give him our blessing either, because he can't proceed without this permit.
One last question. How many members of this board are going off in the next year?
Just having had the sheet in front of me. Mike's up for reelection in 2000-- these are the folks up for, excuse me, reappointment in 2013. Mike? Mike? Everybody else is stuck for another year or two if they choose to stay.
So if it would be the same, basically the same planning board. I guess what I'm worried about is if he's delaying this to get new members of the planning board that didn't realize what was going on before. If it's just economic factors, then I may agree, but--
With the exception of Mike, everybody has two to three more years that's in this room and the board of selectmen appointments, so.
Mr. Hamlet, did you have a comment?
I did. Just to be clear, that we give him an extension, he doesn't have to come back before us to do anything, right?
Well, he's--
You give him an extension for a year, he's--
He's got his approval, but it's conditional, so he has to meet the conditions.
Right.
And--
He has to get the state's approval.
--one of the previous implicit conditions that he got the original approval for has expired.
Right.
So he's got to go back and do that.
Get the state's approval.
And that's very serious. That's a real, that's a real linchpin, I think, to the whole thing.
Mr. Wilson?
And just to follow up on that, you're saying that the new state regulations are much more stringent. That would almost necessarily mean a redesign, then, of some of the infrastructure.
I would think so, not being an engineer, but our engineer said that expressly, our town engineer. Plus, just as an aside, you've got Plymouth Woods in there, which will probably greatly affect their drainage, you know, and what they're going to have to achieve to get proper drainage. So that's kind of a one-two punch there. There's going to be some serious reengineering on drainage, I would think. I don't know how Dick feels about it, but that's my take on it.
Mr. Gosman?
I'm picking up on both Mr. Dragon and Mr. Wilson's observations. Having been one of the individuals that was on the planning board when this project was approved seven-plus years ago, the standards that were in place seven years ago were adhered to in the design and all of the process that we're implementing. We have the benefit today, this planning board, of the knowledge that we've gained seven years later with what has occurred as that site development has unfolded over the last several years. And as a result of several site visits that a number of us have already had out there, we can clearly see that there are unanswered questions, that the conditions that were previously imposed by the planning board using best available standards at that time apparently are not adequate. I say apparently because that's still subject to engineering analysis. But as I think about what Mr. Dragon was talking about with the concern about the economics from the standpoint of the developer, seven years is an extraordinarily long period of time for an approval to stay open for construction purposes. And the fact that it has not occurred, I can understand because of the day's economy, but I don't believe that burden should be transferred from the developer to the town. I think the planning board would be wise today to let it expire and require the developer to come back in front of this planning board and resubmit a new application so that you can hold it up to the day's standards. And also recognize that there's just been a number of inquiries by adjacent abutters concerned about problems that they've had with drainage. And as I think about what are the only opportunities that this planning board has to try to be sensitive to their concerns, is to have a new-- to try to be sensitive to their concerns, is to have a new complete site plan review. So my suggestion is that you do undertake letting it expire and require a new site plan application to occur.
Those are some great points. Ray, Mr. Wilson.
Also, the planner can correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, it seems to me that it could also be an action of the board to take no vote on it tonight. Essentially, it becomes a pocket veto. Because if we, we don't have to make an affirmative vote...
No.
If we fail to vote on it, then it expires.
We were just here to vote on the extension, of the extension. And may I just, excuse me, but may I add one more point to all this? One of the conditions, and Dick and I had spoke, well, emailed about this a little bit, one very important condition of their original approval, and Ray will remember it, was for the developer to submit a grading plan, which is huge. And that's not just putting the road in, that's, you know, what's going to happen when you start terracing and doing this and doing that, and we'll get, that kicks back to, you know, active and substantial development, which we won't go there yet, but that was one of the things that would have provided that and some roadwork and something. And I understand their economic position, but none of this was accomplished, nothing was accomplished, so...
Just, I mean, as a follow-up on that point, I mean, I would strongly imagine that the grading plan, I mean, looking at the plans that, you know, we've, we've got on this project, that you, you see a lot of grading work and some drainage work associated with the roadway, but there's nothing associated with any of the individual buildings. And all the grading work and the drainage work associated with the buildings is going to interact with the roadway, which then ties into the alteration of terrain permit, new criteria, new standard. So, I mean, everything is going to be working together. I mean, I think if they submitted the plans they'd submitted to us, you know, seven years ago, to alteration of terrain and DES now, they'd say, come back when the plans are done.
I think some, a lot of good points were brought up by the board tonight. I agree 100% with Mr. Dragon that we should not be just pulling the rug out from underneath developers who are bringing money to this community and trying to make the economy work. I, I do not favor that, but in this case, Mr. Goslin's brought up some valid points, that there are some unanswered questions out there, that going through a site plan review, might, we might get those answers. The neighbors had a lot of comments, and I think that we owe it to the neighbors as well, to, to try and get some of those answers. In my thought of looking at it from the developer's point of view, the zoning really hasn't changed in seven years. It's pretty much the same zoning, it's just...
Well, actually, it's gotten better, because they had to get special exceptions for the numbers of units, and now that's de facto in there, yeah.
But at least they can get them back in here for some public hearings.
Also, they've done, you know, their preliminary engineering and the efforts they've made going forward, they've paid for that, but they've got a basis from which to start. They're not starting absolutely cold.
Right.
So in terms of getting some money back, if you will, or not having to expend that kind of money, that's done. It just needs to be probably fairly tweaked, this new stuff.
And again, you know, I'm very aware of what the economy has done, and I, I feel for the developers as far as the money that they've spent, and they want to continue on and not have to reinvent the wheel, but if they don't have to reinvent the wheel, we can get some questions answered. I, it's a hard one, but...
Can, what do we do now? Do we vote, can vote, no vote?
No, as Paul said, you can not do anything, not vote, and it will expire on Saturday, or if you feel as a majority that he needs 30 to 60 more days, which I don't, I think we've talked about it personally, I will go out on a limb and say that. I think, I don't know why, I don't know why he asked for it, but your prerogative is say yes or no on that.
Mr. Goslin.
Now, there is a third alternative that Sharon had caused me to think about. There could be a motion on the table to extend, and if you vote that down, that demonstrates where the board's thinking is. My thought is that you need to take a positive action, and voting down the request for an extension sends a message to the community and to the developer where you stand on the matter, that you don't necessarily get through a pocket veto. Then people speculate. My suggestion is that somebody put a motion on the table to offer an extension, and then you voted down, don't approve it.
At this point, would anybody like to, yes, Mr. Kelly?
Can I have a point of audio?
Yes.
Would you, the chair, would you please say who has the votes tonight, if we take any votes?
Mr. Apple.
Who's eligible for voting?
Eligible.
Yeah, who's seated? Well, we've got, Mr., we've already got a two, three, four, five, six, we've got seven, so you did not...
I cannot vote.
Correct.
That's right, just want to make that clarification.
So you cannot even make a motion or, or anything. Would anybody like to make a motion at this point, or would we want to talk a little bit more before a motion? Yes, Mr. Kelly?
Make a motion that we do not allow the extension to go forward? Is that what I'm supposed to say? How should I vote?
Vote to extend it, June.
We talked about doing possibly a positive motion and seeing whether it flies or not.
Okay, then...
Make a motion to, make a motion to...
And make a motion that the extension...
Extend by three days.
For how long? We're talking 60 days?
That's your prerogative.
Just throw 60 days out there.
A 60-day extension? Is that, or is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. All right, so we're all clear on this. We are voting on whether to give a 60-day extension to the Blackies' Mountain View Development to become busted in this...
They won't have...
No, but this is what we're voting on.
Extension to the planning board approval, is what it is.
Extension of the deadline.
Extension of the timeframe of the original approval.
Which would bring it from 5...
May 5th.
5th.
To...
To 7/5/2012. All right. So is there any discussion on the item on the table? Yes.
That doesn't mean that they are vested.
Oh, gosh.
No, no, no.
Not unless they can pull off a miracle in 60 days. And I don't think so, and I don't mean that, I'm not being denigrating, it's just...
So we're going to see whether this planning board...
Wants to give an extension.
Wants to give an extension for 60 days. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Any abstentions?
Any abstentions. So that was unanimous vote, negative. That brings us to other, a release of letter of credit for Plymouth Business Park owner, Business Park Dennis Prescott.
Just briefly back, so therefore, the de facto expiration is Saturday.
Yes.
Okay, okay. This is just real simple paperwork. Some of you may be familiar with this project, Dennis Prescott's Business Park, out on Route 25, out on Tenny Mountain Highway. He had a five-lot subdivision, and there's a commercial on this, and anyway, no, no huge deal. This is paper you don't need, but I'm passing it out anyway. He had a letter of credit, he...
And this is the furniture barn?
Yeah, yeah. He had a 10% contingency on his original construction escrow, if you will, via a letter of credit. It wasn't money in the bank, it was, well, it was his money in the bank, but it wasn't anything the town was holding, other than the letter of credit, to have this project winter over, so to speak, and have Mike Vignali go in and look at it and make sure everything was kosher. And the original letter of credit expired, I believe it was February, and because there actually was some snow cover out there, I worked with Dennis's banker and Mike Vignali to get a 45-day extension on this, which was April 15th. Mike went out on April 12th, Mike Vignali, our, our town engineer, looked at it, said it's all fine. Our protocols call for the planning board to vote to release this last remaining money, and then I take a form up to the Board of Selectment and sign off, and then Mr. Prescott gets his $15,000 back from the bank that's holding his letter of credit. So this is an important exercise, but it's pretty much a pro forma exercise. The, there's been no, and any of the conditions of approval on that subdivision are not in play right now, because it's just that one lot that's been developed. I think the only thing that isn't out there is a cistern, but it was to be put in when the last lot was developed, and none of them are, so I just need a motion to approve the release of the letter of credit for Plymouth Business Park, if you would be so kind.
Any motion?
I'll make a motion to reduce the price.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, so we're voting on to release of the letter of credit for Dennis Prescott. All those in favor, unless there's any discussion? Okay, seen them? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, that's done.
Yes.
Item number nine, public comments.
It's not here, but I have paper.
She always has paper.
I have your new planning board roster, it tells you who you are, your telephone number, and when you're getting done.
In case we forget.
So...
Important, it's amazing.
In case you forget.
There you go. Folks, I know, this is, this is kind of important. I know I passed out last time the zoning ordinance changes. Mary and I were going through this darn thing, and the paging is off, the pagination is off, so if you get a number such and such section in the table content that says page three, it's actually on page seven. So you get a whole new set one more time. We'll get this squared away.
Just to let, just to let the board know that my email is not accurate.
I like that.
Oh.
It's adelfia@me.com.
We want to get maybe their attention enough.
So for those that just got the handout, for my email?
Yeah, you're right.
If you cross out Roadrunner.com... It's me. Can you name, Mr. Chairman? Mr. Kelly? So, my email address is incorrect, it's glovehollow@me.com.
M-E?
Me, me, M-E.
Okay.
Dot com.
All right. So I've got four, three folks who are getting Master Plan Volume 1 copies, Bob, John Kelly, and Pat.
Yep.
And I'll let you know about that, and that's all I have, thank you very much.
Okay, any motion?
To make a motion, we adjourn.
Okay, second.
I'll second it.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, we're out of here. Meeting's adjourned at 7:52.